Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 12, 2006. This evening, City Council is going to have several committee meetings. One before, a special session of council, and then several after. The first, we are going to go into a finance and personnel committee meeting. That committee chair is Jim Sands.
Mr. President, this meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee is to hear a report from our Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure. As council members know, the State Auditor's Office comes to the city with some regularity and reviews our record-keeping, et cetera. And they have requested that -- they have strongly suggested that we set up an unclaimed monies fund. And Mary Ann, our Treasurer, is here to talk about that. You're on.
So in response to the auditor's request that we set up such a fund, but the purpose of it is to -- in the Ohio Revised Code, it does state that while we are to hold certain funds' monies for three -- some for three years, some for five years, it's primarily checks that we have -- the city has written that have not been cashed, and they're on our outstanding checklist. And we have some that go well beyond the five years. And the purpose of establishing the fund is to move those monies in there that are so far unclaimed, and we will then send notices to all those people that we have names and addresses for to give them the opportunity and enough time to claim them. And then if they still remain unclaimed, then those over five years can go back into the general fund, but they'll be moved into the unclaimed fund first, which will be -- it's called an agency fund, it's like a trust fund where the money's already expended, but it's just to hold the dollars until we give people the opportunity to claim them.
Any estimate of how much money we're talking about right now?
Yes. As I say, you probably have the figures.
I do.
In the two -- in the two accounts, the payroll and our operating account. And it's under 10,000 in each one, I think, so.
So payroll's about 3,000. About half of that will go into the general fund. About half, a little more will go into the general fund because it's more than five years, the rest is creative.
It's less than 20,000 total, I think.
Okay. So if something is already aged five years at the point we enact this ordinance, then it will go into the general fund at that point?
Yes, probably we'll move it all into the unclaimed monies fund originally for bookkeeping purposes, and then anything that's over five years old, we can automatically, as per the ordinance and the statute, move right into the general fund. And then once a year, we'll pick a date that will move the rest of them, anything that's over a year old, into the general fund.
So we'll send notices out each year to any new unclaimed funds that appear, checks that are over the 12 months.
And as I -- okay, as I understand it, this ordinance is probably council's only action with regards to this. The rest of it would be internal administrative activities between your two offices?
That's the advice we got from the Law Director, that we don't need to follow up every year, that it's inherent in the ordinance, that we can do what we need to do every year, move the money.
Question, Bill?
Going back to when I was Treasurer of the city, I fault you for moving on this and getting it done because even when Judy Hall was the city auditor, we were regularly and annually noted to need to have this action done. And tracking down all the different checks and making sure that everything was outlined, I'm sure has been more than a little bit of work for your office, too.
Yes, it has. Rachel Bean has done a fine job, but there are a couple from 1987 that we don't have a clue who those were going to be.
Oh, and I can't believe that many of them will ever be tracked down because even back then, most of the checks or most of the missing things were water. What am I trying to say?
Like refunds for utility bills or deposits.
Yeah, refunds for utility bills when students come into town, set up utilities, leave town, no forwarding address that we're able to do, they're not interested in that $3 that's left over at.
Right, there's a lot of very small checks like that.
Yeah, and that was at least back then when the state auditor would regularly say, "Guys, would you do something about all this?" It has gone on for a long, long time, so thanks for cleaning that mess up. It's been ignored for a long time.
It's a lot to keep those on there and have to reconcile those every year. Mary Ann and our office to every year have to track all those.
Think it'll be easier for the state auditors to do their job now that that'll be gone.
Yeah, it'll be fine by us.
Can you hear the comments from council members?
I was going to ask the procedure they go through when they have a check that hasn't been cashed. My son's had one from Johns Hopkins, and I had to sign the paperwork and send it back.
If someone actually finds a check, and this just recently happened, a check that was four-plus years old, they brought it in and the auditor's office did reissue a check because we physically had the proof.
Well, this was a payroll check he hadn't cashed, and so I sent the -- I mean, I haven't gotten the check back yet, but his account.
Same with this one. But I'm assuming they would reissue it if he sent it. That's the plan here.
Well, we would have a record of that, like we said, for five years. It will still be on the books.
Would you notify? You notify people?
We will be notifying.
We will.
As soon as this is done.
Yeah. The auditors have said, though, it will probably be a simple notice that we have unclaimed funds, and then a list will be posted at City Hall and probably on the government channel. We're not going to pay for ads every year to those people and, you know, these checks. So we put a notice out there, that's all we're required to do. Excuse me, that's what I meant, my no. But, you know, if somebody comes later, I mean, we have employees that still work for us that, you know, stockpile their checks and then bring them in and or lose them and ask for a re -- you know, and we're happy to do that. If they do that money, we will reissue a check and do whatever needs to be done.
Any other comments? We will have an ordinance, not tonight, but at our next regular session, we'll have an ordinance to look at with those language. Thank you, Mary Ann. I don't have any miscellaneous. Mayor, did you have any miscellaneous finance at this point?
The only thing I might have, Jim, is that last week you did the emergency ordinance on the pool repairs and had to pay the contractor, where the city had ordered some pipe, $4,000 some dollars worth of items that we probably ought to add to that since they're all part of the repair. So I'll have the exact figures to you for next Monday's meeting, and we would just amend that and then I'll get those vendors paid.
Sure, thank you. No other miscellaneous? We are adjourned.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the University of State zoning designation. Well, in preparation for this, we do have an attendance sheet that is that everyone in attendance or everyone wishing to speak. Everyone in attendance, we will have this around the audience. Everyone with their [inaudible 00:07:35]. So that we have had our public hearing, and if anybody comes in and gets started, we'll do that, too. We are also passing out some zoning maps for council to look at. And if there is anyone in the audience that would like to also see the zoning maps, do we have any that we could put on the hazels down there? You're more than welcome to walk up here and take a look over our shoulders if you would.
There's a letter floating around here somewhere.
You'd like to know the truth, it's almost 7:00, and I'd rather not have to go dead on the air and then come back. So Lance Rep of the University of State's here is what we are showing at this point.
Yeah, it just corrected that what we thought was essentially a typo.
That was something that I left out.
Is that what it said? Let me turn it around so you can look at it. Okay. So I can come up on the [inaudible 00:11:00]. Okay, good. Yeah, no, that's good. Jim?
Yeah.
We've had a delivery to you all this time. But you can do it in the miscellaneous in that committee. Okay, so there are a couple things.
Was that what it said?
Yeah.
This is the next step in the process of annexation for University Estates, and that is to set the zones as they are. As the map is showing, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, Debbie Phillips has asked the members of council, maps that are color-coded and show what the zoning designations shall be for different parts of University Estates. One of these will be in council's offices for anybody that would like to review and have any questions for their council members. A public hearing is an opportunity for citizens and interested parties to make any comments or speak to the University of State's project zoning designation. I do see the office tonight is Lance Rep, Representative of University of State. Lance, I understand you'd like to speak.
I thought I was going to do that at the second part of under the ordinances.
Okay. Either way, we are in receipt of the letter. Should we read this into the record at this point or just look at it at the minute? Okay. If you would like to speak at the ordinance itself, and that's what we will do, we'll read it into the record at that point. Other comments? Member Bain?
Mr. President, I was looking at the map along the R3, along the existing, I think it's the existing, Armitage Road as opposed to the new one. And it looks to me like it crosses, like, say the one that's south and west of the other one that's north and east. Looking at the south and west one, it looks like it's on the north side of the road for a while, then when it turns, it goes to the south side. It seems to me that on a map of this scale, it's no problem, but on the ground, it may be an issue because it seems to be -- I mean, I think the Zoning Board of Appeals will interpret the law, I mean, interpret the zone, but it doesn't -- it's probably something that needs to be made more specific. No, this right here. And then the northeastern one looks like it starts out on the downside of the road and then sort of goes at about, and I don't know where about the place is, but it seems to take both sides of the road after that.
I think [inaudible 00:11:20].
Yeah, it's supposed to [inaudible 00:11:22].
[inaudible 00:11:23]. Oh, that's crazy.
So the one that looks like it goes south of the road is not for the -- this needs to be amended? No, no, I'm talking about the southwestern.
What we have here, for folks who can't see these maps, we have the map that was submitted by the Planning Commission with their recommendation, and then we took that and had it digitized and color-coded.
So Lance, what it looks like on the south side of the road, the R3.
So this was just an attempt to make it more easily able to tell where the boundaries of the zones are. And I'll go ahead and mention at this time that there's also a memo from the Planning Commission that came with the recommendation, which details the fact that only part of the project is platted. So for the part that's currently platted, the zones meet those boundaries as they've been platted. The part that hasn't yet been platted, when it comes through the Planning Commission and gets platted, that the boundaries of the different zones will be brought into compliance with those boundaries as they're established. So.
So if you -- if we could put that other -- this may just be for council, but this doesn't have the zones on it. So eventually, there's going to have to be an official zoning map that gets signed, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay, so. Yeah, so this is pretty clear that the boundary is that road, and that's pretty clear that all the R1s, R3s are on the north side of the road, or no, it's the north, whatever, northwestern side of the road. So between the two of them, it should be clear. I just couldn't understand how it could go along the road and then magically go to the other side. The road slipped. No, that road isn't going to -- it's not going to slip.
Also remember, Nancy, when we did the [inaudible 00:12:34], this boundary changed to follow the road closer than it is on this one.
Okay.
So I think you're correct in saying that this line shouldn't follow the bottom side of that hole.
Okay, it's probably just a small matter, but I still want to clarify it before we do final reading. All right, thank you.
Do you think that's [inaudible 00:13:05]? You're able to there?
Oh, this takes a lot of ink.
Can we almost regard that as a typo and make sure that the next?
Well, it's a clearance.
Yeah, and I -- then, do we have any objection from any council member if we -- and that's a good save and a good catch, Nancy. I really am glad you pointed that out, but can we let the record show that that would be a map equivalent of a typographical error that the larger map does point out, but is well reflected in the minutes, the point that you've made, and even use a copy of that map as an attachment course repeat, understood as corrected?
Okay.
Okay. Without objection, I'll ask the clerk for your answer.
I mean, it's quite as you have R3s at the end of cul-de-sac. Do you have any idea on that? I mean, is there a reason for it? I was thinking if these are really upscale residences, it'd be a lot of traffic.
Lance, how about sitting at this table? That way you will be able to be heard with that microphone and have a place to spread out.
I figure there's a reason, but I just would like to hear what you have to say about it.
Hi, my name is Lance Rep, University of State's. Nancy, when we looked at zoning here, as we're trying to go through, a lot of this will be determined on the absorption as we go along, and we wanted the opportunity, if we needed condos, more condos, we'll say it as we get to that point, we'd have the opportunity. Very likely, you know, some of those could be single families, or maybe more of it could be condos, and we're just trying to, you know, give a fair representation of what the future sell-out could be.
Okay. And so when I think R3, I think of the, you know, sort of, home, you know, pretty dense settlement, that's what I was wondering. So you're thinking more of the condominiums.
Condominiums, definitely.
Rural houses, something like the suburban type of condominiums that are currently, yeah, okay. Because RR3 would accommodate a much denser settlement, that's why it was a little questioning. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council members for this? Lance, thanks for that clarification. Are there other comments for the public hearing regarding the University of State's and its own designation? None from council members? Seeing none from the audience, we call to an end this public hearing. Next item on our agenda is a special session of City Council. We do have a forum with five members of council present. Ordinances for third reading, O6106, ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Washington to State Street on Saturday, July 22, '06, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks, and suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Chapter 7.05, parking regulations, Section 7.05.261, city garage meter parking rates, and regulations. In the absence of Ms. Flowers, it is a member Patterson speaking to this.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of O6106.
Second.
This is the ordinance to have a second annual Boogie on the Bricks. Last year, it was, once the rain stopped, it was a very pleasant event, and it's on July 22. This calls for closing Court Street and not charging for parking in the parking garage.
Are there further comments on ordinance 6106? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6206, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, rental dwelling and housing permits, Section 29.03.07, explorations and renewals. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O6206. Mr. President, O6206 adds a late fee to our zoning fees. Our zoning fees are collected early in the year for -- and we've had quite a -- we had until recently quite a few that were slow in payment. It means that we end up spending money to send out notices and call. So those people that need to take a little more time are going to have to pay the cost of that when this ordinance passes.
Further comment? You know, I find it interesting that we receive no negative comment that I'm aware of on there.
I think I said.
I know, I know.
You're the city, you should take a late payment for over nine months, I mean, after all. Pay taxes.
I'm sorry, I walked it up. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6206?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6306, an ordinance amending ordinance O10105, authorizing funds for engineering of a water line and pump station for the Columbus Road Water Project, number 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O6306.
Second.
O6306 is part of a water sewer upgrade that we are doing in the Columbus Road area. It began as a small disaster with the floods of January 2005. Now, I guess we could call it an opportunity because we're going to be doing this major upgrade, probably all of it needed to be done anyway, so here we are doing it.
Charging payment for someone.
Yes, which is, thank you, Andy, stoned for that.
Well, and member Bain, who asked him to check on that. Although, further comment? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6306?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6406, an ordinance authorizing construction of Columbus Road Water Line Project 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O6406.
Second.
O6406 is the authorization to construct the water line project. As with the sewer line, there's some grant funding, and we thank the mayor for garnering that money for us.
Are there other comments in ordinance 64? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6506, an ordinance authorizing construction of a gravity sewer lift station and force main for the Columbus Road Sewer Project, again, number 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O6506.
Second.
O6506 is the sewer part of this. Earlier, our sewer line ran along the Hocking River to the Curry Street Pump Station. The floods of January '05 discovered by Kathy Heck's husband, I guess the floods caused a problem. Kathy Heck's husband found a problem, it's not the place most of us go on a regular basis, but anyway, walking along, birdwalking, I guess he discovered this, and the rest was we had to figure out a way to repair it. And the repair is authorized by O6506, and gravity sewer lift station, force main for the Columbus Road Sewer is what's going to be built in response to the flood damage.
Further comments? Member Sands?
Before we leave this set of ordinances, can the mayor remind me what the schedule is for this construction?
Right now, we're waiting for the permit to install to be approved by the EPA. Once we receive that, they've made some changes to what we had submitted in the latest go-around. Then, construction, the bid documents will be prepared and we'll go out to bid. We'd like to be under construction, you know, this summer.
Completion date would be approximately?
We can guess all the weather.
Okay, it's a little warm.
And how much money did Kathy Heck's husband cost to solve?
No, no, he's to be commended for being a good citizen and calling it in.
Is it really true he found it when she threw him out of the house and he was wandering aimlessly on the west?
We could flake him.
Okay, are there any other?
Now he's out of town.
Okay. Are there any other comments on ordinance 65, inappropriate or otherwise? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6606, oh, that one's almost biblical, isn't it? An ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance and the 2006 interfund transfer ordinance and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 6606.
Second.
This ordinance has several actions in it. First of all, we are appropriating $12,500 to the underage drinkers' fund and $19,000 to your internal service fund. The $19,000 is to cover some additional well monitoring in our West State wellfields that was mandated by EPA. And then, with the money appropriated to the underage drinkers' fund, through the interfund transfer ordinance, we're going to transfer that money from the underage drinkers' fund into the drug court fund. This is some money that the court needs to move around to deal with some grant funding. And then further, once we've moved it, then we will appropriate it to the transaction class that allows the court to utilize it.
Further comments on ordinance 6606? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. On the ordinances for second reading, O6706, an ordinance amending the exhibit A of ordinance O12605 to increase the staffing level in the police department. Ordinance 6806, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 826 and a half acres located on State Route 682 and Armitage Road, known as University of States. Lance, at this point, if you wish to speak before I speak to this ordinance, you're welcome to.
Thank you. My name again is Lance Rep, University of State's. Our attorney, Mr. Remus, cannot be here tonight and asked me to present a letter, this letter to President Vice, and I have a copy for everyone here, and ask that it be included in the minutes. So I'll pass each person out.
Lance, did you wish to read it into the record? Should I read it in?
Or you can.
Before us, I have a correspondence from S. Locker and Oremus, addressed to William Bias, president of Athens City Council regarding University Estates Inc. annexation and zoning ordinances. Dear President Bias, at your council meeting on June 5, O 6, I appeared on behalf of my client, University Estates Inc., and requested that council and University Estates Inc. agree to extend the 120-day time limit within which the city must act on the University Estates annexation petition in order to allow University Estates Inc. to submit an application to the Planning Commission Council for designation of an 830-acre mixed-use planned unit development. I was advised that the request would be discussed in an executive session of council immediately following the June 5, O 6, meeting. I learned only this morning that during the executive session, council determined not to agree to extend the 120-day time limit. Since the October 16, 2000 Development Agreement wherein the mixed-use planned unit development zoning was expressly indicated, University Estates has never wavered from that position. We had been advised by the city that it did not have an applicable mixed-use planned unit development ordinance and that it would be necessary to negotiate an addendum to the development agreement. As you are aware, multiple drafts of such an addendum have occurred. University Estates then was advised that the proposed addendum was not legal. At or about the same time, University Estates was advised that the city's PUD ordinance was now both applicable and appropriate for our project. All University Estates is requesting is an appropriate amount of time to apply and complete the PUD process. University Estates Inc. had previously indicated its intention to withdraw the pending annexation petition in order to allow time to complete the PUD process. We were advised that the city's position was that once the acreage was released by the county commissioners, the petition could not be withdrawn by the applicants. On behalf of my client, I would remind the county, the city, that our first annexation petition filed in May 01 was approved and released by the Athens County Commissioners on August 14, 01. Subsequent to that action by the county commissioners, the city determined that it had objections to the boundaries of the property to be annexed and urged University Estates Inc. to withdraw its petition to a vote by City, Athens City Council. I'm sorry, let me read. University Estates Inc. to withdraw its petition prior to a vote by Athens City Council. The city's current position is contradictory to its prior position with regard to our first annexation petition. Such an inconsistent position by the city is not defensible and could be determined to be arbitrary, capricious, and/or unreasonable. We also believe that the resolution of the Athens County Commissioners approving the release of the 830-plus minus acres for annexation as approved by the commissioners on January 18, 06, may be defective in that it fails to specifically recite the six findings required under revised Code 709.033. Said resolution is further defective in that a certified copy of the resolution was not signed by a majority of the commissioners, nor was a certified copy served upon the agent of the petitioners at the annexation petition. A copy of the, of said resolution is attached. Litigation is expensive and time-consuming for all parties involved. At this juncture, your council must decide between spending precious public funds to litigate these issues, or in the alternative, communicating with University Estates Inc. to either permit the withdrawal of the petition or the extension of the 120-day time period to allow University Estate Inc. to receive approval for mixed-use planned unit development. We ask that you give these matters your own consideration in hopes of avoiding litigation to as the methods to revolve these issues. Very clearly yours, Frederick L. Oremus. It is duly noted that we are in receipt of this. I will remind our council members that once we start receiving letters from attorneys talking about litigation, that anything you choose to say could be used in any proceeding that will happen after this meeting. I would advise council, although they certainly have no reason to follow my advice, if they choose not to, not to speak to this. And other than advising everyone that it is for review in council office, is there anything else that anyone wishes to say?
I have a question. Are any of these issues, you know, historically ever been attempted to be solved through mediation?
Not formal mediation in the sense that you are probably referring, but as far as many people attempting to work behind the scenes and do what I've called on numerous occasions, shuttle diplomacy, yes. But at this point, mediation would be a legal strategy.
Right.
That I would hope that if it was appropriate, we would discuss in executive session with our attorney, the law director, and make that determination then.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments? Lance, is there anything else you wish to say? Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the ordinance? Let's see, about 68, I believe? Ordinance 6906, an ordinance designating the zones for the annexation area located on State Route 682 and Armadillo Road, known as University Estates. Ordinance 7006, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio for an easement for a water main on land under the jurisdiction of Ohio University and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 7106, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from President to Carpenter on October 28 and 29, 06, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens that week, known as Halloween. Ordinance 7206, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 28 and 29, 06, Halloween weekend. Ordinance 7306, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 28 and 29, 06, again, Halloween weekend. Ordinance 7406, an ordinance closing a portion of East State Street on August 6, 06, to accommodate farmers' market local artisans. Ordinance 7606, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Now, ordinances for first reading. O 7706, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $350,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of renovating the city's parking garage and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, first of all, I believe I'm, all of these will suspend probably at the next meeting.
Probably.
Because they all have timelines on them, but since they're being introduced tonight, we'll talk about them a little bit. This ordinance is, deals with the continuing payments for renovations we did on the parking garage several years ago, and this will allow us to pay down $150,000 on a $500,000 balance, and then refinance $350,000 of the note.
Living in the town, aren't you, mayor?
Mm-hmm, sure, that's good.
Pretty impressive, yeah.
Oh, I'm real pleased. Anytime we eliminate that, a tap, that's not bad. Other comments? Ordinance 7806, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $2 million of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to the, to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is a similar ordinance, although the principal due on this note is $2 million, and we are refinancing $2 million. At this moment, this point, we're not paying down. Our, our TIF is, is coming into play, and hopefully we will begin making substantial payments after this.
Other comments? Ordinance 7906, an ordinance consolidating two bond in anticipation note issues of the city of Athens, Ohio, into a consolidated note issue and establishing the terms of such consolidated note issue and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance does exactly what its title talks about, kind of consolidate the notes, the $350,000 note for the parking garage bond and the $2 million East State Street Improvement Bond into one bond issue. This is our bond council's recommendation that we're, in the end, save us interest money.
Other comments? Ordinance 8006, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to renew the note authorized by ordinance O 5105 to meet city obligations in the sewer fund and declaring an emergency. Again, member Sands.
This ordinance authorize our, authorizes our auditor to renew a note for up to $275,000 for, for obligations in the sewer fund. And I just received this like you tonight, I'm going to ask the auditor if she has any comments, because I'm not familiar with O 5105. I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
Well, we did this last year, but actually, two years ago, my first year in office, we took out a note from Hocking Valley Bank to pay on our sewer loans because we did not have the money in our sewer fund to pay the principal and interest, or the interest and fees that we had to pay. So we took out a $300,000 note. Last summer, we paid down $25,000 plus interest and fees, and this summer, we don't really see any extra money there, and so we are going in interest and just renew the $275,000.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ordinance 8106, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
This ordinance moves some money around, we're, I hadn't turned the page, I'm sorry. We're appropriating from our unappropriated balance $100,000 to the, to the general fund, $5,000 to Athens City Enhancement, and $50,000 to the, to the general fund. And I know the mayor talked about this last week, but, excuse me, mayor, could you remind all of us?
Jim, by the way.
Okay, sure.
Which one do you want?
$100,000 to the general fund is funds to allow the auditor's office to pay income tax refunds. We budgeted this past year's budget, $100,000 to do that. We've already expended $80,000 in refunds, $50,000 sitting, waiting to be refunded, so in anticipation of this, we're appropriating $100,000 of additional funds. And actually, last year, they did have about $200,000 in incomes. A lot of these are for individuals who, because of their, the location of their jobs are not required to pay income taxes, but their employer withholds taxes, and so they are due this money. $5,000 is for your cemetery, excuse me?
Yeah, you're right, West State Street.
Right. The mayor has suggested that we utilize some money from the Athens City Enhancement Fund on an annual basis to do some very needed maintenance to the West State Street Cemetery. Particularly, the West Side Neighborhood Association has been asking this for quite some time, and this seemed to be an appropriate use for that. And the $50,000 to the general fund is our, our payment to the Athens City Schools in lieu of taxes which we collect from the university courtyard. They, they give us some money in, I think we use other language when we set up that agreement, but since it is a tax-exempt project, they do pay something, and then we transfer that money to the Athens City Schools. I needed a little reminder, but that's, that's the three actions taken in this ordinance.
Is the cemetery the one that's near Arts West?
Arts West, yes.
That Jim and I have discussed, but he hasn't brought it to committee, that $5,000 there is for an increased amount to pay Athens City School on the Athens Station Project One. That, I think, was one we, I'd asked.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I started to say that, and you nodded your head yes, so I.
So it's not the cemetery? Same amount, same fund.
She needs the money for the paying schools.
So it's not the cemetery? It's not the cemetery?
It will, soon. Soon, we'll do that.
But it's not this?
It's not this. I was mistaken.
Okay. This is for someone.
I agree, he did shake his head.
I did.
He was talking to the county.
I wanted it, but she took it away.
So what is this for?
So, Kathy, 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 Kathy,
Having addressed all items on our special session of council's agenda, we now stand adjourned. The next item is City Services Committee. The chair of that committee, Nancy Bane.
I called the order to City Services Committee, and unnecessary noise ordinance is in a final phase. Jim, if you'd like to talk about it, I believe you're the main person behind that, even though you're not a member of my committee.
Well.
Actually, Debbie was the one, or I mean, Amy wanted to talk about.
Yeah. We suggested making two changes to our noise ordinance. Currently, the hours for limitation of noise are from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM next morning, except a dairy a little bit on weekends. And I'm suggesting that we move that beginning time to 10:00 PM during the week. The noise has migrated into neighborhoods more, and I think it affects working people, certainly affects family with children who go to sleep. So we can be quiet an hour earlier.
During the week.
During the week. We are not changing it on Friday and Saturday night. And then, we had a letter from a citizen on Fourth Street who was complaining about noise from an outdoor eating, drinking area on Court, Park and the Street. And she was told by the police that they couldn't cite vocal noise. And so I proposed that we include this, the vocal noise into the same language that they can use for citing a phonograph, radio, musical instrument phonograph, or other machine for reproducing sound. And we, we have some notes from the law director's office that is saying it's impossible to prove by identifying the voice, following it to its source. And so they're, they have no problem with changing the time, but they're, they're saying that this inclusion of the voice is somehow different from the electronic noise. And I'm sorry, I don't see that difference, but, so whether we want to, the question that they asked us is would we like to discuss this further?
What possible information could we have that we don't have?
I'm sorry?
I say what possible information could come to us that we don't have?
Well, I don't know.
Both of them are pretty popular with the neighborhood associations, I think. They ask for the change in time.
However, the.
Not the.
The court is saying that they're not.
Prosecute.
Well, the judge has said that, is not, even if such language were included, criminal responsibility would attach only if the prosecution proved beyond a reasonable doubt that the host was aware of the situation, had the ability to control it, and recklessly failed to correct the situation.
Would that include a business establishment, the host?
I think that host is.
Uniform?
A general host. It can be anybody. And again, personally, I don't see why it's possible to identify a host who's in control of a record player, a CD player. If you know record players away. But not a person who's yelling, so. But that, that's our comment from our legal authorities.
So the first is good, the second one is questionable.
The first is fine. The time change, the time change is fine with everybody. Yes, okay.
Okay. In, in light of this, I guess, because I don't live in one of these neighborhoods, thank goodness, but loud parties in which people are talking and, you know, there's music and then there's a whole bunch of people making a lot of noise. So do I understand that the, that the people making noise cannot be considered in this ordinance? Am I understanding this correctly? Like, it's not just like one person shouting, it's a bunch of people, let's say, yelling and.
Like fraternities, sororities.
Yeah, or, or big parties that are noisy from people.
Can we include that?
Or small parties with noisy people.
Or, or, okay, yeah. So, is that the point?
I think that's what these comments are saying, is that we can't legally establish responsibility for.
And that's what the nuisance party ordinance was created to deal with.
So there's another ordinance, that, there's another ordinance that deals with it?
It seems to be a very slippery kind of.
Slope.
Situation to get any responsibility for, and I'm not sure why.
Well, that's why I was kind of interested in this noise detection unit, which I understand we actually don't really have.
We have one, but it doesn't work very well.
Right.
But there might be newer models that we could. Carol?
I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the noise ordinance 130410, number six, between the hours of 11:00 and 7:00, the shouting, yelling, chanting, or making of the human voice or vocal cords in a louder-than-normal conversation tone or pitch other than an emergency situation. Isn't it already there? And, but they're saying it's not enforceable.
So these is doing.
Are there other cities that have voices included in their ordinances? And have we checked on that to see if there, there is some mechanism for enforcing such a thing? I, I certainly find it difficult to believe that other university towns don't have similar situations, never mind, you know, other communities that where people just get loud, or they're in areas where there are a number of establishments that, that might become loud. I'd like to see us pursue this a little further because it seems to me that there ought to be a way to enforce it.
So could we put forward the change in time and then do some additional study on the other one?
I think that's a great suggestion.
And I think Bowling Green seems to be able to enforce its nuisance party ordinance, and they seem to be able to do a bunch of other stuff, so maybe we ought to start with them, if you would, Debbie, please. Let's see how they do it.
I would also like to ask, when we're looking at that, to see if there are any provisions for warnings, because I heard from some students and from whatever that new name of the legal services group for students is, a sense that it can be somewhat arbitrary, whether people are given a warning or cited. And so if we're looking at other ordinances, I'd like to see if there's models of, you know, places that they give a warning, especially if it's like on the edge of that time period or something like that.
And again, our ordinance says after reasonable warning, but the question is, what is reasonable?
It's rather like going 68 miles an hour in a 60 zone. Not everybody gets arrested, but some of us do.
You did?
Not me. But I do think that there are no guarantees in this world, and I think that we have demonstrated, although they haven't chosen to believe it, that 80% of the time, it's a warning or it's thrown out, even though the people making the complaints are students against students. But I guess, you know, there's an unending new group coming in and saying it's a problem. But I think the police do a pretty good job of handling what is a very difficult situation where students are complaining, they don't want it, someone, I mean, the girls down the hall called up and said, these guys are making terrible noise, but don't tell them I told you, because up and down and beat me up. And, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that goes on, and I start asking them when you're, if I'm talking to them in my office now, my geography major never has. No, actually, I've even had, known engineers that have had noise violations, and they sort of know that they, I mean, when you think about engineers, they're always worried. But, you know, I just get kind of sick of that kind, we're not targeting them. I mean, they're targeting each other, for goodness sakes. But I know it's very common for them to, for the legal office to say, it's a problem. I guess I don't.
Okay. So we'll introduce an ordinance with the, changing the times, but, and then we'll follow up with some investigation on noise.
On the other side of noise and the voice.
If I might comment on the warnings?
I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
Our policy, whenever I've checked these out with the police department, and then up they came and they gave me a violation, yes, they did, but almost every case I've ever looked at, that's not the first time they've been to that residence that quarter. And maybe they have also received previous violations at that, and you just don't warn the people after you've warned them two or three times over the course of the quarter, and you're called back again, you just go ahead and cite, because otherwise, they think, oh, I can make as much noise as I want, and if they come up and give me a warning, hell, then I'll turn it down and everything will be okay. It just doesn't work that way. I mean, we had, I had that complaint most recently on one of the fraternities, that the officer came, gave no warnings, gave it, yeah, but if you check back through the records, they've been cited before this quarter. And you just don't, they ought to learn.
Thank you.
A one get out of jail free card per each occurrence seems to be.
Sometimes it's a six state. Thank you. Is it going to be introduced by members of council?
Sure.
Okay. If you can speak. All right. Second thing on my agenda is the armory. And it's been in the paper a bit, I think we have some options with respect to it, but we have some relatively immediate needs with respect to the east elevation of the armory as you're facing the armory from Court Street. If you go off to the east, it looks like there's a problem in the city, and there is a problem. They went in and checked with the architects to see if it was a structural problem and found that, you know, indeed, the building is still sound, but repairs are needed. And so I have in front of me a proposal to do masonry repair to the tune of, now I've forgotten it, it's about, oh, come on, Bean. Anyway, the amount is to do spot mortaring, joint removal, spot tuck pointing, $1,8,110. And then the second one in east elevation, the east elevation, and return, west elevation, return south elevation, $14,130. Okay? Now, the question is, well, why would you repair a building like this? And the answer is, it's a public building, it's on the National Register, it's a sound building, it's the end of a, of a road, it's a design item. I personally would not like to necessarily see it sold off, I'd like to see it used for some public purpose. We're going to have a planner in here sometime soon, maybe the person here, she can find a grant and come up with some kind of activity site that would be commensurate with all of the energy that seems to be on North Court. Carol moved her artisans and farmer's market up there, and I think that most of us listening to the radio know that the, the group of merchants up there seems very eager. And so, you know, if we, if we do this, we'll be holding it, having a holding action, and we will have the parking around it collected and paid for. And maybe two or three years from now, we'll actually have a plan for using the building or disposing of it. But we're going to, I would propose that we would do this masonry proposal that we have in front of us. Does anybody have a problem with doing that? I know they've taken parking away because they were afraid about the bricks falling down, and now they know that in fact, it's not a, it's not, it's a serious, but it's not, it's something that can be repaired. And my second proposal is, did you have your hand up?
I, I would have my hand up, yes.
Okay, go ahead, and now I'll go to Carol next. I just saw them.
Is there any, any use, current use for this building? Does it have any tenants? What goes on in there?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We're going to, I was just going to propose something, but.
Oh, okay.
Something small. We have parking.
And that is my question, what, what's our level of?
Right now, they're not allowing parking on the east side, once it's repaired. I'll come back with you before first reading with a number.
But are we also renting behind and on the west side?
On the west side, I'm not sure about behind. I'll check with Ray on that. Do you have any, Jim, air?
I think we're only renting on the west side. Behind is so close to the alley, it's just a little too tight that we didn't feel comfortable renting those out.
And, you know, the thing is that if we, if we would dispose of it immediately, then all our possibilities are foreclosed, and we can at least, I mean, we can mothball the building. And the Historical Society has come to us and said, we're renting lockers at, that aren't heated, and so on an as-is basis, I'd like to propose that we allow the mayor to negotiate equivalency locker, I mean, storage unit with the Historical Society until such time as their situation is resolved. Because they're renting something right now, you know how the lockers are, those storage units have no heat. They have lights, I guess ours doesn't have light, but.
Ours has.
Daylight, it has lights?
We have lights.
Okay. And so if that's okay, that would also be, yes, everybody's.
Actually, several years ago, when the Dairy Barn was undergoing renovation, they moved some things into those areas.
We have two problems, asbestos and lab paint, but I don't think either of those would necessarily be a problem in this particular use. And so then we'd have income from that as well as the other. Won't be a furnace, I think, at least part of the roof is repaired.
And would we take the money for this from CAP, or where would you?
The mayor suggested that we, that was the next thing, I already talked to Jim about it, pushing the envelope as it was. 582, where we have money in the unappropriated balance to move up and fill it up.
582 is the Armory Hudson Building Fund. We have put parking revenue into that over the years. I budgeted $12,000 this year to pay the electric bills and do some repairs. We haven't done any repairs yet. There's about $6,000 of unappropriated balance, so if we appropriate that, I think we can do both, all of the masonry, and so it still leaves a couple thousand dollars if something else needs repaired.
Okay. So it's, well, as, you know, you think about things that aren't necessarily, I mean, it's not a drain at this point, and we may have something good coming out of it, instead of just more housing and crowded cars and noise up against that hill.
Which was a mayor's dream when he bought it. Took the opportunity to buy.
I think a lot of us had that dream, so that's good. 582, Debbie? Jim's decided to do it earlier. Any other issues with respect to armory? Commercial hauler license, it, this is coming out of my way-back-machine brain, so I thought I'd say, when we, when we started down the road of changing to the new solid waste program, we had commercial haulers that covered the town. They were largely local people who had a truck, and it was in the city hauled also. We found, I think, earlier times that we could not keep track of the volatile population, and about a third of the people weren't cleaning their garbage, so we moved over, took over residential ourselves, and then moved the commercial into a free-for-all with all five haulers. Since that time, the commercial license holders have all disappeared in favor of large corporate entities, some of whom have been in here, almost all are large corporate entities. And I think there's a lot of change going on in town, and I was thinking that maybe it would be prudent for us, given the current size of the trucks and the impact those trucks have on our roads, and I was happy to note how well we did getting the residential garbage up at those places where the haulers were outsiders, come once a week, and there's, the garbage was still sitting there, quite honestly, on Sunday morning, whereas all the rest of it was gone, except for the burnt-out coach frame. But other than that, everything else was gone, and I was pretty pleased with that. And I know Ray sent a letter that I think all of you received, and commending the fine job that the administration cooperation with the university and cooperation with Athens County Recycling, reuse, APAC, and the rest did. But anyway, I would propose that the time has passed, the people who had the original licenses are long gone, they've been gobbled up, and I would like to propose that we start to pare the number down. The five was our creation, we can do it. And Gary said to do this, what we would do is say, no license shall be transferred from an existing commercial hauler. Should a commercial hauler elect not to renew its license, the total number of licenses available in the city shall be reduced. The code enforcement office shall notify city council when a license is not renewed, and the total number of commercial hauler licenses are reduced. Okay. Okay, so that's the proposal. And the idea is that, at this point, I think in Southern Ohio, there's a lot of change going on, a lot of, the larger corporations are moving in certain directions, and I can see it coming a little bit, and I thought maybe it would be prudent for us to say, let's just kind of keep reducing it, maybe some of those local, smaller people could take a bigger share, because I don't think they're part of the changeover, and we can keep our, more of the money in this area. Would be my goal with this, that's fundamentally what I'm trying to do. And keep those big trucks out of the neighborhood, off of East State Street. They're so big that you, I, you know, I always move over when I drive by them because they're so immense. They just get bigger and more. And actually, I think the trustees at the solid waste meeting, township trustees, were talking about how heavy they were, and how much having four or five of them across the same road was breaking up some of the suburban roads in the county as well as in the city. Okay, so we won't put anybody, with this proposal, no license will be, no license holder will be, will be stopped, I mean, will be eliminated, but should they choose to go out of business, that license will not be available for another entity to do.
Just clarification, if hauler Smith retires and just goes out of business, that license is not available.
Right.
But if I buy Mr. Smith's business and keep running it, do I assume his license?
You would not necessarily, as we saw last time, assume his license. I mean, it would depend on if you were there first, as you recall, fifth. Remember, there was some.
Oh, yeah, yes, I do, I do remember that.
Yeah, and so it was, there are no guarantees. But I think that we aren't worried about the itinerant local person as much as the big guys. This seems to be moving in a certain direction. I thought it's opaque enough, I could probably be more obscure if I really worked on it. Mr. Bias, what are you gonna say? I can hardly, I.
Well, I'm having trouble understanding how this legislation doesn't accomplish exactly what you're not trying to do. And help me out here, because, I mean, I'm missing it. Puller Smith goes out of business, what keeps Waste Management or some other large hauler from basically just taking over that business, but also at the same time keeps a hauler Jones from entering into the market so Waste Management doesn't take everything?
I think you'd have to demonstrate that our ordinance, as it's written, I was the one who is somewhat responsible for it, actually accomplished what you said, which is keep the small guy in, and I don't think it necessarily did. I mean, there are a couple that are, by happenstance, remember Waste Management got out? And because they didn't pay their fees? And the small guy came in under the wire last time?
Yeah, I do remember that.
Oh, you were a treasurer, you don't remember?
No, I do remember that, I must have been.
Okay, so.
No, because remember, Waste Management, I riled them on the way that they, here's a five-year contract that if you don't let us know thirty days before the contract expires, then it automatically renews for another five years, and I had that.
We tried to fix that, they agreed to, I'm not sure they followed through.
You know, I mean, I, I had to deal with these large haulers in many, many locations and have, I'm sure, less sympathy for them than what you do.
It would take a lot.
I don't know. I, I guess I'm just wondering, why do we want to eliminate the ability of hauler Jones from entering the market?
Well, I think that, you'd have to go back and say, the idea is to get the big trucks and to streamline our system. We have people going back and forth with these trucks across our roads, and the roads aren't built to take them. That's the easy, easy answer. The more complex answer is that I think they're moving toward one single large operation in the southern part of the state as opposed to the northern part, in my opinion, that's going on right now. And, I mean, they'll let this, I don't know, I'd rather not see them. That's an improvement.
Okay. Actually, I guess I also was kind of with the same impression as President Bias. But if the issue is large trucks, I mean, is it possible that we could limit the size of the vehicles? Is this within our purview? I mean, we'd like a lot of small, local people to have business, right?
The two-thousand truck contract.
Yeah, so, so more licenses are better than fewer licenses, unless you know something I don't, but I was gonna say, is it possible, if it's the size of the trucks, that we could, is there, is it legal, Mayor? Mayor Abel?
You're asking a lawyer question, I think.
Well, well, I'm asking a question.
I'm not a lawyer.
Historically, I, I mean, or, or understanding of how cities operate, because.
Well, I think you could post the street, but, you know, the, the police have a lot more to do than to chase after garbage trucks.
Well, and I think that'll have to do with, my brother's a trucker, and that has to do with weight and all of this.
Right, right.
If it's a legal truck to be on the road, I don't think we can keep it off our roads.
Okay, well, I was thinking about these alleys and stuff, I mean.
I would be surprised if we are able to say, okay, you're legally able to drive down thirty-three, but you're not legally able to drive down Court Street or an alley.
Well, so the next step is this, then, instead of the legally driving.
Posting weight.
Posting a weight, a weight limit, I mean, is a structural issue. Most of these are tied into bridges. Bridges are annually inspected, and part of the inspection that is done on a bridge states that this is the legal, you know, mode that it can do. And you can see that out in the county and in township roads, we haven't seen it in the city, but we have each bridge in the city inspected annually, and we have to file a report with the Department of Transportation. And if any of them get to a point where they can't, you know, need a load limit or allowed to do that, and usually that comes into play more with bridges than anything else, because each street, obviously, unless we have all the specifications or you want to do test core drillings, we don't know what base is underneath there in all cases, because some of these streets, I mean, you can very easily go over to Park Place if you want to see a street that kind of goes like that, or Union Street between College and University Terrace, I mean, obviously, there is not much of a base underneath those streets. And they will be, you know, more further damaged by that. Other streets, like College Street between Union and here, yes, we know because it was done in the last fifteen years, that a concrete base is down, brick is over top of that. As council noted, spent the extra hundred thousand or so to do that when we did a utility project under the road.
That's weird.
So we know what our structures are in some areas, but not in all. But I would think that in order to really actually evaluate that, I would want to have a professional engineer do that, because you'd have to be based in some good scientific basis of saying, these following roads should not have, you know, should have a weight limit. But the weight limit would not just apply to garbage trucks, it'd apply to every truck.
Fire trucks.
No.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks.
Yeah.
So, so the argument is that we would eventually, I hope, go to zoning out and maybe going for bids, instead of having these trucks lace themselves back over different parts of the city. I mean, I think that would be the next step, because from a, from a sustainability point of view, that's a more viable option. You, I know, you're all seduced by the concept of these little guys, the little underdog guy, but, you know, we start looking at the, at the list, and you can see that many of them are probably participating, what I would call, placeholding, much as we found the vendor's licenses. They have very small numbers of, of customers in the city, but they, they just keep it in case, just in case, it might be valuable. Yep.
So is the intention to go towards one company?
Or two, or three?
And I would very much resist the, the concept of it being one company. And, and the one thing that bothers me about this, and along with the idea that, I'm, I'm not sure that it's the big guy that would be squeezed out, it would more likely be the, the little guy, is that, you know, i- if there were the concept of, if I, for example, keep my prices reasonable and, and squeeze out competition, and that way, other folks give up, then I'm the only one on the block, and I can do pretty much whatever I want. And certainly, that theory has been used in many businesses, and, and I would find that disturbing.
Well, I think that what you would, I mean, I think personally, just from, I ask people all the time, what are you paying for your garbage, do you have your dumpster tipped? And it's really variable, it's highly variable across the city. And we gave up trying to enforce anything. But we're back to, do we have enough business for five licenses? And I think the answer is that we don't. And I think that what we're doing is just having a lot of, of traffic. Paul probably could have done this better than I, it's actually.
One thing Nancy, you might want to consider is at least putting in the language, if one of our licensed hauler buys out another of our licensed haulers, one license is automatically goes away.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that.
That's the intent.
Eliminates some of your other, other, other concerns. The other thing from Carol's standpoint is that at least the solid waste district, which we contract with for all residential garbage, and the uptown franchise area, does offer commercial service. So, and if we would get down to the point that there were one or two haulers, council could enact a lot more oversight over what that is, charges, just like you do on all residential. And by, since you're allowing the contracts out, you could try to, you know, get into the idea of saying, there are some maximums here that we want with regard to trash hauling, commercial establishments.
We did, we did that earlier.
Right.
And we've, and since that, it's been impossible for us, because we don't have a sanitary supervisor. But if you want to think about it for a week or for a couple weeks, we can do that. I don't think there's going to be a big problem, I was gonna check with Steve, do they get renewed this first of July? We don't know. Okay. It's, it's a changing area right now, I think, the price of gasoline. My daughter right now and mom Fern is paying twenty dollars a month for basically residential service. And I think the residential customers in Athens are supporting, what, twenty-five people working, pay taxes in this area, I'd like to keep as much money here as I can. I think that's what we've accomplished, so. I think we're all on the same page on that one. This is new territory, so I'm gonna encourage you to think about it, talk to your garbage hauler, see what you get, and I'll talk, find out when the licenses will be renewed, and we can come back on that one.
Yep. I'm sorry, I just have a clarification. So are you thinking that if there are fewer haulers, you can control the routes, where they go, and they're not?
Not yet, no, but that would be a goal of the future.
Okay, that would be a goal, so that there would be less truck traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I, I guess my question is, if there are only two haulers, why can we control them and not four? I, I, I don't, I guess I'm wondering how that happens.
Well, I think, I think it's very hard, we don't have a sanitation supervisor at this point in time. We used to have a person that did that.
Okay.
And go around and check the fees. We do have the, the regulation that they're supposed to submit their list, and I think they're supposed to tell us how much they're charging, but I can't remember if that's so or not.
But tell who?
Us, I mean, court enforcement, no, no, I asked court.
Okay, okay.
Asked court enforcement to get it.
Court enforcement, they report it to court enforcement.
Well, I think that Ray, who works with them on this, had a really hard time getting it from some of them. And so I think that's one of the, the questions, some of them just weren't willing to, they thought it was proprietary information. So, you know, it's, you have, they pay a relatively small amount for the privilege of, of driving through town and having certain contracts, they, they certainly fulfill a need as a group, I mean, some are, they're different entities totally, but the question is, are they meeting our needs? You know, because there is trash outside of town to be picked up, and, you know, and that's always a possibility. But I do think the prices are going to change, and it might be a good time for us to be thinking about eliminating those licenses, and at least minimally doing what the mayor said, which was to eliminate a license when they combine, when they buy one or another. Because we saw one of the big companies take three, you know, just take out three of the original guys very quickly. I mean, they just made them an offer they couldn't refuse in terms of financing. If you, I mean, if you're a small person with this old truck that's just basically bailing while you're together, they couldn't, they couldn't keep up. So next time, we'll talk about it. Okay, Leslie, you're on for AEP.
Thank you. I guess I wear my Eager North Court Merchant hat this evening, Leslie Schaller with Casa Nueva. Unfortunately for Councilmember Phillip, she shares an office space with me, so she has listened to probably two years' worth of woes recounted on my concerns with some of the outages we've experienced at the north end of Court Street with AEP. I'm, I'm gladdened by the messenger report that Casey wrote yesterday, that it looks like there are some initial plans over these next couple of weeks to do some more upgrades at the north end of Court Street. But I would like to just share with you some of the incidences we've had in the second half of May in two thousand and six. AEP did have a planned outage on May fifteenth to upgrade some of the equipment at our end of town, and I think did the work satisfactorily. But after we've had such a cool spring this year, one of the first hot days of the summer, we had an immediate outage. My business lost evening business on Wednesday, I believe it was the twenty-fourth, Thursday the twenty-fifth, and then also again, Wednesday the thirty-first. Oftentimes, when we have interruption of service, it's sort of like the Fourth of July at that end of town, the transformers burn up and explode, it's sort of loud. I mean, we have a brick wall behind us, and you can, you can really hear the fireworks going off. We've had a number of pole fires as well, so you see some interesting amount of flame shooting from the top of an electric pole. And I think on the twenty-fifth, that Thursday afternoon, when we had the power outage, actual wires came down and fell in S Locker's parking lot. Fortunately, there was no one getting into their car at five fifteen that afternoon. But one of the things that I have been heartened by is whenever we call the fire department, they are there lickety-split, usually within five minutes, they tape it off and get it under control, making sure that no one walks through this area. The fact that we don't have local crews anymore at AEP, sometimes we have good turnaround, and the crew is there within the half hour, you know, sometimes it might take a couple hours for the crews to arrive. So obviously, as one of those eager merchants at the north end of Court Street, I've had more anxiety, I would say, in the past month. We have had a successful last couple of weeks. They did replace a pole, replaced a transformer, and upgraded, I think, a number of lines as well on the thirty-first. So we haven't had any outages, no brownouts since then, and it looks like AEP is going to continue to do some additional work. I think there's been so much growth at that end of town, the equipment has been undersized. And I'm wondering, as probably one of the buildings that is one of the huge sort of energy hogs at that end of town, if there's a way that the city, I guess, can better inform AEP when changes happen. Obviously, they review any service changes we have, but I don't think it's always taken into context with all the changes in the neighborhood. So that would be just one thing I would like people to be a little more attentive to. So thanks for your time.
So how long have you been there, Leslie?
At? For West State Street? Well, twenty-one years, since it's been a worker-owned business, but five years previous.
So obviously, you're not the problem.
Well, I, I don't know, I think a lot of people would. I have a varied opinion.
Well, I mean, I just, I'm trying to figure out how, what's gone there, if it could be, I mean, it's obviously, I read Casey's article also, and it seemed like there was a remedy, but maybe they, they have some responsibility too, because they do have the meters that they read in some bills.
Right. And, I mean, we have done a lot of renovations since two thousand and four in our downstairs area and the retail area. So I think if you look at all the renovation or new construction at that end, it's just, how do you, how do you put that in context to make sure that there is adequate service? Last summer was particularly disturbing because we were out about seven different times, and one period, some of it was storm-related, we were out close to forty-eight hours. So that's, you know, that's pretty serious interruption of business. And also with the brown outages, or just the complete outages, I mean, that does have wear and tear on equipment as well. So we had some equipment, some lost inventory last year that we were able to do. that we were able to do an insurance claim on. But for 2005 graduation, both Casa and the Blue Gator were out that Saturday evening. So, you know, I mean, there were, there were many people very upset. I mean, I've heard probably, again, just in these last two weeks, 100 jokes about not paying my electric bill. So people do sort of get perturbed when they come in and want to have dinner or have a margarita. And, you know, they're not able to do that.
Well, and I also, when, after hearing this, I was in the area and witnessed one of these a couple of weeks ago and it was really dramatic. I mean, things were exploding and wires were falling down and flaming bits of insulation were coming down off of the wires into the parking lot below. And I think that, you know, one, one thought in terms of just keeping us aware of this is, it's great that there are some planned improvements in terms of the capacity of the infrastructure there, but I want us as a city to remain aware of that. And if we need to communicate with the PUCO or anyone to try to, you know, monitor this and make sure that the capacity is there and we don't have a hazardous situation in that part of town.
And I think that's been part of my anxiety. When you see flames shooting from poles, I mean, most of those buildings back there are block or brick. And usually it happens in the summer when we have a little bit higher humidity. But I think fire scares me more than anything back in that section of town. So anyways, sorry to rant, but one more concern.
Got two more people here who want us to do that.
Yep. To continue your rant, if you remember years ago when I was on the board with Margaret Pilow, she used to get very upset at many, many power outages. And Margaret being Margaret, the character that she was, would not let up and get on the phone and call AEP and call PUCO and send off letters and everything. And finally, after many, many times, got some response back that admitted that our grid in this area is some of the oldest in the state. And if you recognize the number of times that you see your lights are flashing and your answering machine's flashing when you get home and your computer is rebooted, much less someone like myself who has ten ventilator patients that has to maintain emergency generators and oxygen and all that kind of stuff to make sure that it is more than a little bit disconcerting with this. And the two nights that you're talking about, I can't even imagine, what a loss to a restaurant. Those two restaurants in two nights would be, that's, that's certainly your profit margin for a month and probably a lot more than that, I would think.
Yeah, in a seasonal business climate, May and October are typically our higher months. So, you know, to not be open certain weekends or certain, even weekday nights, it has an impact.
I would even see it appropriate for council to pass a resolution that could be mailed to with PUCO and AEP, if that is a sense of council.
Okay. Leslie, can you talk about a minute? Jim, what were you going to say?
If that were the sense of council, you would include the east side. In fact, we just got a letter last week from AEP who is saying that they recognize that East State Street and down is also one of those areas that loses power frequently, often for a shorter amount of time. And I've never seen the fireworks explode, but we do have lots of power outages. We had one over the weekend. I came in and all of the lights were flashing. So, but if we were to pass a resolution, we might want to investigate parts of the city that are affected more often than.
Can you get them for cutting the trees terribly?
Throw it all in.
And your rates are too high.
Well, the, the local office has been great though because every, last year, I think we called so many times and we were so vocal in our concern that I think there's been a lot more after-the-fact return calls now than we've experienced in the past. So I know they're trying to be attentive, at least at the local level, but we just need a lot of upgrades here in southeastern Ohio and particularly the city of Athens, it seems.
It's the oldest and southern area, I see. So what if we said something like, whereas we applaud their current plans to upgrade in the vicinity of North Court Street, we would like them to, I don't know how to do it, something like, we'd like to have them continue to upgrade on the east side and other sections of town where we have, where we have new, new growth and new demand that's putting, that's taxing their existing system of the 1920s. The 1920s system. I don't know, that was probably the last word you could change, but something like that. Anybody? I mean, it seems to me, have you ever, have you ever had a problem? I had, one time a truck came by and knocked the ground wire down on the house next door and every appliance in the house was going on direct as opposed to alternating current. And most, and had to call the service department and they came right out because it was a serious problem. But was a single person in a truck. I mean, look at the level of, of service in this town. And I was going, I went home and got my broom, not because I was going to fly away, but because I was thinking, if he, if he has trouble, I'm going to knock him off the wire. Because there was no backup. I was his backup, standing there with a piece of wood.
That's horrible.
It is horrible.
No, that's normal.
That's normal, yeah. It is horrible and normal.
Both that I see when they do scoty out the verilla in terms of safety aspect.
Oh, I know, it was very scary. So would you, would people go along with that for next time? A resolution asked to public utilities and to AEP, asking them to continue the upgrade, especially on East State?
And to assess the capacity of the grid.
They notified us that they had plans to upgrade the East State.
Well, we applaud that, but they should have, yeah, they should.
Just look at capacity of the grid in general.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say, when you made that kind of draft, it sounded really positive. I mean, isn't it too positive? So maybe I want to say, you know, we.
Well, I'm not going to accuse that very often.
Right. We, right.
I've known her a lot.
You know, that we, whatever. We, we're pleased that they're looking at these upgrades, but we just want to encourage them and emphasize the importance of it since, you know, local businesses, you know, depend on it and have lost business. I mean, I, I think we want to maybe, maybe, you know, be pleased a little bit, but be clear that we want them to provide. Yeah, a better level of service because it's important to the businesses and the community. So you're being too positive, Nancy.
Howard Stevens used to sit in this room, who was the community service rep for AEP, literally cemetery you now occupy.
Yeah.
He shared with me one time that Solberg's reaction when the power went down during rush hour at McDonald's a number of years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
And I don't think he was quite as positive as Councilmember Ray.
Right, right.
Well, I think that it's easy in a small town.
Yeah, we deserve a level of service.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? So we have that, we'll have Debbie, can you do that a little bit for us? Whereas there were fires on draft, yeah? All members of council? Right? We'll hang together. Okay, I have grass, leaves and brush pickup as my next item and then three miscellaneouses, they're going to be short. One of them is Debbie's actually. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about grass, leaves and brush pickup. Since that time, I, actually, my neighbors have not petitioned me out of the neighborhood yet. But I do, I know the amount to be picked up won't be $7,000, $700,000, as I originally hoped. But it would be enough perhaps to pay half of a police salary. And so, police salary, so we could offset the general fund with that. I know it's a suburban type of service and my people are the ones that are going to have to pay. But I hope that they understand that we need to pay for police and we have some new requirements. And Seth, I have no objections. Jim and I will be introducing, unless everybody wants to join us on this one too, grass, leaf and brush pickup proposal to charge. Yes.
Go ahead, finish that.
That's, to charge. A dollar for the, for the trip and what was it, 50 cents per bag or a bundle?
Just a point, I talked to Ray Hazler today about our discussion tonight. And after thinking about it, he's, he has begun to think that that level is, is, is not really enough to be worth collecting. That once we begin collecting money, then that requires a certain amount, a new, a higher level of record-keeping, which isn't done now. And that higher level of record-keeping would, would make that an insignificant amount. So.
Well, I was thinking that since each address has an identifier in the utility billings area and since each utility billing unit now has no subcontract, the owner pays, that it would not be so tough because we have a database with the, with the numbers in it. It's simply a matter of associating that address with the number. I don't see how it could possibly not.
I'm, that was just his, he had been giving it some thought and that was what he was beginning to think.
But for free, I mean, we, we're going to have to be doing something eventually for your CFI project. And I think it's, it's good to start moving in the direction of.
Right, and, and our thought was that we would make it a minimal amount.
Mm-hmm, and that's certainly minimal.
It certainly is. And that might, it might be worth a try as an introduction. I was just, that was the latest information.
I was having massive computer problems, so I didn't, I was going to call them and I didn't get them.
I just would want to.
No, go ahead.
No, no, you, I just, Debbie, she was. Um, in general, I would rather see it be easy and convenient and inexpensive for people to divert things from the landfill, including compost and yard waste and recyclables. So I, I would prefer that we look at how the composting program, backyard compost and all of these things relate. And it, I, I think that a minimal fee is reasonable to try to recoup the cost because right now we are collecting this stuff, in some cases, chipper shredding it and with the leaves, I think, trying to just compost them. But, and there is an expense related to that. But in general, my philosophy around this is it should be really affordable and easy for people to do the right thing with solid waste and keep it out of the landfill. So I'd rather have us keep thinking about how these things can be really affordable and easy for people.
Well, right now, we're paying, I mean, we're paying people to go out and drive a truck and pick it up. We just bought a new truck, so there are expenses that we have to cover.
Right.
And I don't think it's unreasonable for people who use the service to pay for it. That's been pretty much a standard with us. So are we, well, I'll take a couple of minutes.
Okay, I, I guess I, I would like to see, understand more, you know, how much this would pay for. I mean, it goes back to what Jim said. Because if it costs somebody, you know, $5 to process it and we're collecting $2, I would like to really understand that we would at least cover expenses and make a little on this, that's all.
I think that's a good idea.
Because I mean, if it's a person dealing with it, that's time, that's effort, that's money.
As Nancy points out, it might be easier than we originally.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'd just like to understand it more clearly.
I think that as with many things that we try, we don't understand, we just tinker with it. And I think this is one of those tinkering ones, you know, where we'll, we're starting. I mean, I think it's, it costs money to do it, so we need to charge, bottom line. And, you know, I may be the only one that feels that way, but if it's.
Well, we did hear it from some of our employees who, that they were surprised that we weren't charging.
Mm-hmm. And we, you know, we've charged the students for their, their extra garbage and now it's time to charge the suburbanites for their.
Which isn't garbage.
No, which isn't garbage, but it's.
Right, and, and.
My neighbors, you know, I mean, I'm the one that's going to get stoned when I go home for this.
Debbie has the right.
No, we're going to dump it all on your front lawn.
It would probably cover the bear spots.
And then you can borrow our chipper and chip it up.
I have one of my own. So are we ready for this to come out? Maybe for first of September, so we just have a little bit of time with it and then we can figure out the bugs in it and not in the compost.
Can we just check that what, what would be a reasonable charge? I mean, I agree with Debbie that it should be cheap, but if it's not worth collecting $2, I would just like to.
If we introduce it.
Well, it's going on your utility bill.
Yeah, during the process, I think we'll probably work on that.
Okay. And maybe eventually we charge everybody a composting fee, but not everybody's going to use it because they have, some people have, the school has a backyard composter, blah, blah, blah. So maybe that will be the direction we'll go, but right now.
It's a use-based fee.
It's a use-based fee. No, there's a flat charge and then the other. And we can amend it if you want or table it next time, but I'll do that. Bring it up.
Have we still got banks from the city to the council?
Means, oh, don't start. Not start. Never mind, I don't want to hear it. That's, that's a red flag in my neighborhood. Okay, Athens Paint Project, Dale isn't here, but that is a very, very good project. Would you support bringing it off, out for this year? Paint project, Athens Paint Project?
Sure.
Maybe suspending the rules on it?
We've already done three houses so far this year. Because I put in the budget.
All right, so we don't need to reauthorize it?
I think that was all, about the end of the budget line I have. I think, I think we had three under contract.
Okay, good. That was one that I thought, man, if he's gone. And that was such a good project, we got to keep it going. All right, so it's done. I didn't actually consult on that one. The second one is from Debbie and Debbie's going to talk about this one. It's supposed to be planning and development. But it was in my box, we're just playing hot potato with it. My last one is roll-offs. Here's a, want me to say anything?
Um, you looked at this with Debbie Rocker. So this is the first time I'm looking at this. We have an issue at the Westfield Place Plan Unit Development that the existing access road is located in a different place than where it's reported on the plat. So this is an ordinance that would amend the plat to show the road where it actually exists. I've got a map that I can pass around if people would like to look at it.
That's the fair summary. So it's an amendment to the plat and we have the ordinance already prepared. And all it says is that pursuant to the city code of ordinance says the amended plat for Westfield Plan Unit Development owned by Durside Property is hereby approved.
And it explains in the whereas is that the road is in a different place than where it shows on the plat.
What happened? Do we have any clue?
I, this is all I got, is a draft ordinance and that.
It's in my mailbox.
Last from tomorrow lunch.
So, and it says that the existing access has been surveyed and described, verified against the true location. So making this correction should be all we need to do. The new map will be, it's, it's surveyed as the actual location of where the road is.
She's pleading to Jim for this. I thought it was Ed's time. It was Ed's time, wasn't it?
I'm being magnanimous.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad to be here.
So we can bring that up next week?
Yes.
And we call it the Ed Baumann.
That's pretty far incorrect.
But that's a, isn't that an engineering thing? Seems like it. My last item is, is response to some of the things I've seen, maybe again. So I called Debbie and asked her to dust out some research she did for me a few years ago and has to do with roll-offs. And specifically roll-offs parked in streets that are taking up parking places. And I'm all in favor of people disposing of that garbage in an appropriate way, but I wonder if, and it's pretty murky in the case law that she assembled for me, but when they stay on the street for more than 24 hours, aren't they in violation of our code at that point?
So what is a roll-up?
A roll-up?
Big dumpster?
And there have been several places where, especially on the west side where they've sat for months. Yeah.
I just, when I talked to Ray Hazler, the reason I talked to him is because I just applied for a permit to have one and.
For, for three months, six months, eight months?
No, it's two weeks.
Usually a week, I know.
It's two weeks.
That is the long one.
It's more than 24 hours.
Yeah.
But there is, when application is made, there is a commencement time and a finishing time incorporated in that. And I got the impression from our discussion that there is some thought given to the reasonableness of that time, but maybe they're extending over and we're not following up, I don't know, but.
Okay, I mean, I don't want, I don't think we need to hassle people that are eliminating extra materials from an estate, but I think that there have been some pretty substantial violations. I mean, it's one thing to put it on your property, it's another thing to have it parked on the street and take up somebody's parking place.
Yeah.
Some of them are there for constructions.
Right.
And those are the ones that are more apt to be there for a longer period of time.
Yeah.
But we do have a licensing, I mean, a permit procedure.
And it requires that the people who drop them off are commercial haulers, or no, Tracy does them, I've seen BSS on, so I think that he's allowing, Tracy used to have a license, but she only left, put out them, roll offs, I mean, not that anybody wants to get in the roll off. But we can take some advice on this one, too. I was concerned about the parking places that are in short supply that are taken up by these. But it's, it's one thing, again, I'll go back and say it, repetition, but I do think that if it's in your yard, it's one thing, or in your driveway, but it's quite something else if it's in the street and people aren't able to pass. So maybe you can think of a way around this. I think in this, it says Ray suggested, and this, but this is old news as opposed to new one, that we have stickers and that they, you know, buy.
At least pay the parking.
Pay the parking, yeah. Well, it's not always in the, not the down, I'm not talking about downtown, I'm talking about neighborhoods where.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking on East Eight Street recently, there have been several where because of the hillside, it wouldn't be reasonable to put it in your yard, but they've been there for two or three days and then.
Oh, no, two, three days is not.
I think probably some language about length of time.
Normal expectation, yeah. Well, we can take some more advice on that, and I'm finished. Arts and Recreation.
Arts and Recreation will now convene. We have two brief things, both of them are resolutions. One comes to us from Kevin Swartzoff, and it's asking for a resolution to help celebrate Youth Sports Day in Ohio, and it's just a resolution of support. The bottom line is now therefore be it resolved that June 20th, says oh, seven, Debbie, does he mean oh, six, or is?
The Jeffrey Lewis is good.
He said oh, that he was concerned about the timeline, so it's got to be oh, six anyway, it says here, the wrong year. But basically just to send this resolution to the state to support this Ohio Youth Day on June 20th. It does say oh, so, but I'll check on that. And no problem with that. The other one is similar, and I, Leslie may be able to help me out here. A representative of Ohio University has been working on a, the Space Camp coming to Athens. Put it this way, this summer, it's in Beijing, and we are one of the four finalists for the next Space Camp date, which is two years. And the question for Leslie is, I know there's a timeframe that they would need a resolution, so I don't know if we're in time to do it. I'm thinking that if we did it next Monday night, that that would be in time to have that resolution of support along with the other documentation with the idea that perhaps we would get this opportunity. The other candidates are all big cities, and my understanding is that when they visited Athens, they were quite enamored of the concept of having it in a rural American area so that the students from around the world, literally, would get a taste of rural life in Athens and small city as opposed to the big cities.
Okay, sounds interesting. Now, what is Space Camp? Is it for college students, high school students, how many people?
Yeah, it's youth, but they bring them.
Like high school youth?
Maybe some even younger.
Younger, but and space, I mean, what is it?
It said stuff out there where.
No, I know that, I know that. But I thought it was spacey, but Space Camp, I mean, what do they do?
I mean. It's like a science camp, and they bring in experts from around the world, and the students are selected from around the world.
Okay, and roughly how many people is it, do you know?
I have no clue, more than 10.
It's less than a million. Couple of weeks or something?
Less than a million, right?
No, I believe it's quite a sizable.
Like 5,000?
Oh, no.
I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I don't, I don't know. But to put together the resolution for next week, I've got to find out a few more details anyways.
Okay.
She'll ask you for sure how many people.
I will, I can ask to know how many people. And I have no miscellaneous, and so I will call to order the Transportation Committee, and I know we're not going to get a majority of the Transportation Committee to vote on anything because I'm in tonight, but I do have two things, they're both street closings. They're both street closings. The first is for Friday, September 1st, oh, six. There is some concern about this date because it is opening weekend for OU, but that indeed is the point, that it's a, they would like to have Union Street in front of Baker Center closed off for a pep rally for the students when they arrive on campus, especially focusing with new students, and to give them a taste of the downtown and train them for Halloween. I like that little sentence, and we do have a gentleman here to address this. This is Chad Barnhart, and if you would please come to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about this.
This poor man is waited over.
I know.
My name's Chad Barnhart, and I work as Assistant Director in the Office of Campus Life, which was formerly Student Activities. And we're interested in the street closing for this area for primarily two reasons. One, we've heard from a number of students, first-year students and second-year students, that when they arrive here in Athens, they're interested in exploring uptown and finding out what Court Street's all about and what this party school reputation is all about. And so we'd like to intentionally program off of Court Street, off of, right in front of Baker, to sort of capture those students that are headed uptown, to provide sort of an alternative, if you will, but a social program that occurs between nine and midnight of that Friday of opening weekend in preparation also for the Saturday night home football game that will occur at seven o'clock Saturday evening. And part of it is that the street closing is really necessary for the event in terms of being right there, students come uptown from West Green, from South Green, and from East Green. We have about 2,100 students who arrive on campus in those two days. We're looking to close down the street, there's in about four o'clock, we looked for earlier, but certainly with it being opening weekend, traffic flow is a major concern, and so most students have entered the residence hall before four o'clock, and that area is not necessarily a main thoroughfare, and so that's why we're looking to close down that portion of Union Street. There'd be no cost to the city, it'd be open to the community, and there's no apartments in that area either, so there wouldn't be anybody moving into that section unless.
And the concerns are that it is move-in. We've had that section closed before at move-in or out time, and it has created some level of problem, although that particular spot is not as problematic. And parking would have to be shut off for much earlier than that, which is somewhat of a problem on that day as well, because we're usually quite full. So, and the other problem is the one o'clock end, so we would have some cost to the city because our crews would have to come pick up their, their barricades and.
I don't see a reason we couldn't drop that off, whether it's the police department or.
That might be possible.
Don't we charge if they're closing the street? Don't we charge the closing?
No, we do not.
We don't?
And I believe there are only about eight metered spaces that are there for private vehicles, we certainly wouldn't close off those spaces, they would be open to vendors. We think that would in fact add to the sort of atmosphere.
Now, of course, I'm going to ask, you know, what, in this orientation to downtown and introducing them to the party school, I just.
We don't want to introduce them.
But what kind, what's going to happen in this place? What are you planning to do?
We're looking to work with Athletics, we've had some conversations with Athletics, and sort of have it as a sort of pep rally, so to speak, for that first home football game. We've spoken with the Marching Monten to have some local bands, or to have the Marching Monten there as well as some local bands, also some food and some games that Greek Life would be hosting.
No, I guess I'm curious, just why, why wouldn't the green, in other words, the college green is a nice big space?
Because I'm sure, and I think that's an excellent point, but I'm sure, as many of you are aware, sometimes there have been rallies on the West Portico, that when you just see a few people in attendance, people are more apt to pass by, but if we could program directly off of Court Street, right there in that section, we think that we can catch students on the way out. I think when you close off the street, certainly that signifies a much more high-level event than just off the West Portico.
And you did mention something about, you know, orienting them to the downtown, because students are interested in knowing what goes on at Court Street. So aside from just having activities there, is there going to be any other kind of education or information about this is downtown and?
I don't know that it's, we like to really highlight sort of the uptown businesses like the Donkey and Cold Stone, things that students at 18 or 19 could legally engage in.
Well, how are you going to highlight them?
I think that we can provide resources for them, you know, whether it's a deal through Cold Stone or, you know, some kind of enticement uptown, whether we provide a program of events that would occur in these venues uptown. And so this is sort of our initial step to see.
In the non-drinking venues, is that what you're thinking?
Excuse the beer.
Yeah, that's going to go.
Might be.
If this were to happen, would, would your, would you be willing to provide the city with some extra help or traffic direction, whatever might occur as a result of that?
I've spoken with Mark Matthews, who's acting chief of police at OEPD, to work out a plan if we need to reroute traffic through those lots off of Glieden Hall towards the upper part of East Union Street.
And you could provide some personnel to assist with that? Thank you.
I have two questions, three questions have to do with my experience. University Terrace is which way until July 30th? Is it Mayor, do you remember? University Terrace goes to one way.
University Terrace is two-way.
I meant just on when they're move-in.
During the move-in?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at that, I mean, I've got some concerns about this, obviously, just because we have a lot of people in the town that don't know where they're going, maps or not. I'm also concerned that merchants, many of them have gone through three months of waiting for move-in weekend because it's probably one of the biggest sales days, days of the year. And a lot of people are coming up and down from the dorm, whether that be Ristland Avenue or Jeff Hill or University Terrace, et cetera, after purchasing things uptown. And you have to go through the ground again. I mean, somehow I would want some merchant input from this because, I mean, it may sound great programming or from a student services standpoint, but our merchants make their living, you know, large, I mean, move-in weekend is tremendously important to a lot of commercial businesses in this town. I mean, you can talk to a lot of them, and the first weekend they've ever been open on a move-in weekend or a mom's weekend or a couple other special weekends, they basically say, I never knew it was going to be that busy, I was understaffed, I was understocked, et cetera. I mean, this is, this is, I think, a very important weekend to our merchant community, and I would urge you to talk to them prior to, you know, doing this.
But the actual event doesn't begin until nine at night, so that in itself wouldn't conflict with, you know.
If it begins at nine, why do they want it closed at four or five hours early?
Several production needs in terms of setting up staging.
I'm sorry, it's our commercial street, it's not a production area for music production.
So you're, you're planning on having like bandstands in the street?
Correct. We're certainly not trying to disrupt.
The other thing I'd also mention, even though you are saying there's no apartments right in that area, when you look at people that are coming down College Street to move into frat fraternity houses and sorority houses there, we're getting over to, again, University Terrace and that area, without Jeff Hill to come up, you know, how do you get there? And if you've come up Stimson Avenue, tell me how to get from, you know, State Street to University Terrace without, you know, using College Street and being able to jog over to.
I don't think we're interested in shutting off College Street.
Not, not that.
Just right in front of.
Baker Center.
But President Street and Mulberry Street will both be open by then, won't they? Because that certainly would be a different way for people to avoid that downtown. I mean, that would certainly be one of the requirements of this because there is a lot of traffic that comes, and parents do move their kids in later than nine o'clock.
Oh, it goes on all night, yeah.
I mean, it goes on for a long period.
I, I like the idea of some kind of a welcoming event, and I like the idea of something that helps introduce students to, you know, some of the uptown businesses that are not alcohol-oriented. And I, when you were saying that, I had the thought of, you know, some kind of like treasure hunt or something to get them out exploring and seeing some of the things that are out there and work with the Chamber, you know, work with the Hidden Treasures Group and, you know, some of the smaller local businesses. But I wonder if something like this could be developed collaboratively in consultation with merchants and see, you know, what they think would work.
And we certainly would be open to that, absolutely.
Sorry, in terms of exploring local businesses, I mean, this is, I guess I'm thinking, this is a very small town, and I mean, if you walk up State, I mean, Court Street, you see all the businesses, so even though, I mean, I think it's a nice idea, you know, I'm not sure that it does that if you're having music and sports and everything else. I'm not quite understanding the connect between that and exploring downtown.
I don't think this event is something that would captivate students for four hours or three hours or however long it would last, but certainly on their way up to Court Street and down, as they went down Court Street and then when they came back to give them some activities, some major activities that were occurring during that time. We know that students want to go uptown, and so that's the point of sort of putting it right where it is.
So on their way uptown, they kind of have to stop there, or you hope they do.
We hope they do.
Is council receptive to the idea of going ahead and putting it on the agenda and we can do some further questioning and investigation while it goes through?
Putting it on committee agenda, you mean?
No, on the, on the council agenda next Monday, this is the committee.
For, you mean an ordinance?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, that's what I...
If it's to be done, it has to be in...
Creating an ordinance is what you're saying?
And I don't have any committee here to, uh, comment, so it's up to the rest of you if we want to move this forward and, and perhaps talk to some, uh, people, including the, the Streets Department, the police, the mayor.
But if we had, if we take that time, then we would have enough time after July to do it, so we can get the input without rushing it through, because there is no rush. Well, I guess there's rush because they have to prepare. I am concerned, I have, some of my constituents are uptown business people and they write about whatever closes the street as an obstacle and I think we're all for alternative programming, but maybe we need to take a little bit slower and see if we can get those kinks worked out. President Mulberry Street, what direction University Terrace is going, um, what the issues are with respect to, um, the businesses. I don't know. It seems like it's a good idea, but, and I'm not a member of the committee, but I guess I'd like, under these circumstances, and the mayor was pretty adamant about his opinion and he generally doesn't weigh in so much on these things, when he does, I think we go, listen.
You do run the risk of a BPO.
If we don't have something that, that takes these into account, unless you can write it with, with these things in mind. I don't know, Carol, you're, you've done more street closings than I, so...
Mr. President, I'm a little at a quandary here without the Chairman of the Committee here.
What I would advise is try to get as many answers as you can so that people do have an opportunity to look at it. We can introduce something. It can be amended, it can be tabled. We'll have an opportunity for everybody to talk to the mayor and hopefully get, uh, more of an idea there, talk to, but that's why we have three readings. You know, we can, we can continue to refine it, we can, we've got a process.
But we cannot put it off until August 16th.
But I do know if you don't bring it up, that's making a decision to, we won't have the opportunity for it. So, you know, I think everybody understands that, that this one may be a work in progress as it goes through.
How about the first reading on June 26th? And that gives us time to put up what we're, what we believe in. That gives Amy a chance to resolve these issues because it's her committee anyway. And, you know, we could have a, she could have a meeting then.
Or...
26 of June, is it, or whatever?
But then do we have two July meetings?
Well, we have as many as we want. I know you've all been hoping we'd be through at the end of June. No, just some of us.
Well, the July 4th week, it does look like we will not have a meeting unless we had a special session, but anyway, we can.
Could we add a committee meeting before the regular meeting next week when the other Transportation Committee members will be here and we might have answers to some of these questions?
I think it's gonna, yeah, I think we can do it in a week.
So we can have the discussion in a committee meeting before we read it. That way, if we need to make any changes, it would be a little bit less piecemeal. We can work some of that out in committee before the first reading.
Why not the 26th? I mean, that gives Amy too much...
Well, that would put it up to 26 if we discuss it again next week.
And read it the first time, too.
Oh, and read it the first time.
If we do the committee meeting first, if there are things, details we need to figure out when we've got some of these answers, we can get it right at first reading instead of have to amend it later.
Do we know when Amy plans on doing that? That's part of the problem.
It's gonna press her so much, I think. So the 26th, I mean, we saw the 26th, we can have a meeting then, we can have a special session of council, read it first and then have...
The chances are we'll need a special session anyway. We almost always do right before we... We're generally...
Yeah, I'm like Nancy, I'd like to give Mr. Barnhart some more than a week to do the investigating that we're asking you to do and, and I'd certainly suggest that you talk to the Uptown Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce and, and all those people and get, either get them on board or find out why they're not.
What'll make them semi-happy? I think it also would be helpful if you would do kind of a, a drawing of what it is that you want in that street, the bandstands, whatever, uh, what the event would look like.
Make it easier for us to do it as the answer.
Right.
And we could certainly work at paring down, you know, the limited time, making that time that's closed before as limited as possible so that we don't disrupt traffic anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sorry, I just, I was thinking of students coming and not being even familiar with the campus. And so I was just wondering, you know, I've mentioned before the green, you know, that it's a beautiful space and, you know, maybe there ought to be more things happening there. So maybe you might wanna think about events to familiarize people and feel comfortable also being on campus.
And one of our attempts for, um, sort of Welcome Week or Opening Weekend is to have smaller things on Thursday night. What we're hearing from students is they don't really, after they move in on Thursday, they don't wanna really explore uptown right away. They sort of wanna stay close to their new home and check things out. And so we're trying to do things on the green that Thursday night and then have something more prominent, so to speak, uptown on Friday night and then the football game is, of course, Saturday evening.
The one thought that I have on that is that, um, we have had problems the first weekends that OU's been open with our new students and kind of traveling in, in packs and, uh, that, that was one of the comments we heard from students down in the Palmer Street area that there were uninvited guests, uh, coming to the, their area. So, um, that speaks well for having some organized activities that the students would go to. Um, but the question is, is it necessary to close the street to accommodate that? I, I don't know. That's what we need to look at. Thank you for coming and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I have one other item, uh, the street closing. And this is for August 3rd, kind of, uh, coming right up. And it's for the King Midget Card Jamboree. Um, the, the problem is the designated place is on, um, Union and High Street and, uh, the mayor feels that probably that'll be possible by that time. I find it a little scary. Um, the backup plan was for what street? Second Street. And I, I do know the mayor didn't think that was a good idea to, to put it on Second Street. Um, but could we do it with a contingency, uh, Mary Abel?
I thought the date was later than August 3rd.
Well, it's August 3rd on here.
The problem I don't really like about Second Street is that there's not very many alternatives for people to get down in that area. Plus you had Branville and Slaughter, you're gonna post people there and it is a two-way street.
Weird intersection down at the bottom of the hill, too.
Right, with Central and all those others coming in through there. It may be a nice hill. We could start, I mean, Wednesday we're starting to do the milling on everything and a lot of it's just gonna depend upon the labor of everything, but I just didn't really think, I thought it was August 12th.
Well, the last time we did it was in 1999. It was in the second week, but, uh, on this, it's written in as the 3rd.
And for anyone that doesn't know, reason High Street is used is that was where they tested out the King Midgets, to see if they could make it up the hill.
How about Raymond? Oh, there's speed bumps and they're natural ones. Raymond is a formidable street. You know Raymond?
What's that doing?
Same, has the same problems as Raymond. I'd hate to see Second Street. I think that would be awful.
Well, I'd say if we can find some backup plan that's reasonable. I, I would hate to pass an ordinance that they're...
Yes.
That they can do it and then have them not be able to do it because the street's not open.
Well, we'll know a lot more after Wednesday, once the, once the asphalt overlay has been taken off of the, of High Street in that area. We'll know how many manholes are in the way or is it real rough? We'll look at it because then, you know, that is the first block they will work on and they will do the curbs and sidewalks that are scheduled in that area. Now, the plan is to do all five and a half blocks that are done, both on High Street, Lancaster and a little bit on Washington. And then just from a cost standpoint, they only wanna bring the paving equipment in one time and do it all in about a day, a long day's work. A lot of this weather related, but even if you have the asphalt off, if you got the sidewalks, which was one of my concerns, and the curbs done so that you don't have construction holes on the, where the people will be watching it, you really just have to look at the surface because I don't know what kind of surface that street was in the late 50s or early 60s. I imagine it was probably brick. And we may go and be going back to more natural type than what's a good, just freshly asphalted surface that's probably one of the finest surfaces in town because it was done in the last week or two before the event. And so let's, I don't wanna consider an alternative, I just wanna say, let's not jump too fast because we will know what the underlying surface is by the, you know, this week. And then we could get with the event organizers, they can also look at it and say, if we can't get it paved, is this gonna be an acceptable surface? And take it from there.
And that is it for Transportation, no missed land use. The best for less.
Um, actually, Communications Committee doesn't have any issues today.
That's the best. That's the best news you've heard. So do you know what you're doing with respect to this one?